Wayne County Board of Commissioners are back. We've come out of closed session. We're back in session to review and go over the budget with Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a couple of remarks before we get into the work session formally and look at the possible cuts and everything. I thought it'd be good just to talk about, one of the questions that y'all had asked me about was, you know, we compared this budget to the amended budget. And one of the questions was, how does this compare to your original budget? And so, this chart does that. Does everybody have a copy now? Steve, did you get one? Okay. Uh, we went back, this is the general fund. It's seventy-six thousand, four fifty-one, seventy-nine. That's the current general fund for this year. I mean, not current, excuse me, that's for fifteen. The original budget with, for two thousand fourteen was seventy-five, two fifty-four, eight twenty-three. So, the difference, and it's an increase, is one million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. And then what I wanted to go over with you was the things that we faced in fifteen that we didn't have in fourteen that led to why it's up some. The first one is, of course, the contingency for five hundred dollar bonuses. If y'all remember, that's a half million dollars. And that was not in last year, obviously. Last year, you had five hundred thousand dollars in your original budget for outsourcing jail inmates. And you recall, they had to come back to you with a budget amendment there. This year, we've put in nine hundred thousand. So, there's a four hundred thousand dollar difference between what was in last year's budget and this year's budget. Then on the library, the new Steel Memorial Library, the difference in cost there is four million, I mean, excuse me, four million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars. Now, we've already identified one area that we know we can cut back on that, and that is, I became aware that, and I think it may have been said at this meeting or another one, but we think there was a commitment by the town of Mount Olive that they would pay for the electricity on that building. And so, we're gonna be able to drop that, and you'll see that as we discuss some more things today. Senior services transfer, if you remember, Pam had talked to you about this before when we went over the budget, there was about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase in indirect costs. And that is where you allocate money to cover the cost of my time, her time, different support functions. Those are your indirect cost allocations. They went up a lot for them. The net effect on the general fund, in terms of cash, is zero, but it did increase their cost on that. Okay. Then we had sheriff's office vehicle replacements, about a hundred sixty-two thousand more. Sheriff's Department, the encryption on the radios. We talked about that from a public safety standpoint, why we need to encrypt that radio traffic. And it's gonna show up there, but also at the E-911 Center encryption, another seventy-six thousand. So, between those, that's a hundred and eight thousand for encryption. It was gonna be even more, but we, if you recall, we were able to get sixty-eight thousand of the 911 Center through the E-911 state money. But this is still our cost for doing that. So, that was basically a hundred and eight thousand more that wasn't in last year's budget. We've got the emergency management, the expense on the security system for the Steel Memorial Library. We're doing a little upgrading on the Veterans Building upgrade, but then portable radios for courthouse security personnel. The North Carolina Department of Ag is required, we gave you a copy of that letter, on the animal controls where, in essence, back in January, I think it was, Wayne, y'all had to commit to two container trucks this year and three the following year. So, we had to put that in. Friends of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, as y'all know, we made a commitment, but that was an amendment. Your original budget had sixty thousand in it. We're now at a hundred and fifty, so that's a ninety thousand dollar difference. And then the other amount that you didn't have in last year's budget that'll be in this year is two hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars. That's the debt service on the Eastern Regional Loans. Now, that's just, that's what we've put in for the first part. We'll actually have to amend for that, but we don't, my recommendation is, don't try to figure that out now. Let's do a budget amendment later on that, once we determine if Mount Olive wants any more, if Goldsboro wants any more, and what we're gonna use ours for. And once we determine that and who's gonna pay what, then we'll know if we have some money coming in from them to pay some of this debt service or not, and what it's going to be. But, and that, this is not everything that we faced, but I just took the big-ticket items that, these were increases that, pretty much, we had to do in, for this year's budget. So, basically, you say, well, how did you get it down? I mean, basically, we had to cut other places in order to get this down to where we were only one million, one ninety-five, three fifty-six above. The one other thing I did want to mention to you is that we also faced was, and that's, there was a significant lost revenues comparing the two years on the vehicle taxes and the delinquent vehicle taxes. The vehicle taxes, if you remember, in the current year, which ends at the end of this month, you got a sixteen-month period of collections there on the vehicle taxes. So, it was a one-time hit positive. What's happening now in the fifteen budget is you're back to twelve months. So, that's a loss, in terms of comparing the two, it'll be a loss of four hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. And then, because they went to the new system, you got a real increase in your vehicle tax delinquencies, because you knew, when Pam and y'all did the budget last year, you knew that since you were putting the new system in, you were gonna get a real shot in the arm on delinquent taxes, because under the new vehicle tax system, you typically gonna collect about ninety-eight percent. Under the other one, you collect about eighty-three percent. So, that gave you, again, for a one-year period, that gave you about a four hundred forty-three thousand dollar improvement in fourteen, but basically, we're coming back to a more normal level in fifteen, and this, this is where it should be from now on. But those two together cost us about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, between the two point one eight million of essentially new expenses, plus the eight hundred eighty thousand of revenues being lower on one of our largest revenue sources, we faced about, that's a little over three million dollars. And so, I wanted y'all to be aware of that. We were able, through cuts, to get that down to where the difference was not three million, but it was one million, one ninety-five, three fifty-six. Does anybody have any questions on that before I get into one other thing? Okay. I wanted to lay that out for you. The one, then the other thing I wanted to do is, the sheriff could not be here today. He had planned to be here. And he had asked that I give y'all a copy of this memo, and you have that before you. In looking at this and discussing it, he felt like he could do some additional savings, and some of this is where he thinks he can cut this hundred and fourteen thousand, seven oh eight. Now, some of this, he may be able to put back into the budget with a budget amendment, but what it'll be is, if he takes in seized funds and things like that, which we normally take in some during the year. But we don't budget them on the front end, because we don't know what they're gonna get. But in normal times, he would be able to replace some of this, but what he's, so what he's recommending is, you can take this out of the general fund budget and decrease it by this amount. And I told him I would make you aware of that, so I've done that. And before we get into, if you wanna look at any other cuts, Pam and I have one other thing we'd like to discuss with you, and that is, we've given you this memorandum. We have started getting, you know, the old saying, the devil's in the details. We started working through this thing on giving the bonus. And as you know, the, basically, what we put into the budget was that we would give a five hundred dollar bonus to full-time employees, and then we would prorate it. Well, as I say in this memo, the full-time employees is the easy part. You know, when you start getting into part-time, you start getting into, well, how do you wanna prorate this thing? And we talked to Chris Stone in IT. We brought in our payroll people because of the GM system, and of course, Pam's intimately familiar with it as well. And what, what we wanna recommend to you is, instead of sitting down and having to do almost one by one on these part-time people, is to put them in categories, 'cause we could spend a lot of time trying to prorate that out. So, what we're suggesting to you is the following rules. Only active employees as of September one, two thousand fourteen, receive a bonus in September, two thousand fourteen. That's kinda common sense, but we just wanted to spell it out, that you gotta be on the payroll when we write the check, you know? Employees hired on or after July one, two thousand fourteen, are not eligible to receive a bonus. In other words, if you've only worked with us for two months, you don't get the bonus. Okay? And then the following outlines the bonus categories for September, two thousand fourteen. This is based on a two thousand eighty hours per work week, and that's just simply forty hours times fifty-two weeks is two hundred and eighty hours. The calculation supporting the hours worked per year is based on the full-time equivalency for the thirteen, fourteen fiscal year. What that means is that only employees of Wayne County between July one, thirteen, and June thirty, fourteen, will be considered in the calculation supporting hours worked. Vacation and sick time hours are included in the calculation. Employees will be placed in one of the following categories. All full-time employees as of June thirty, two thousand fourteen, and still employed as of September one, will receive a five hundred dollar bonus. So, that's pretty straightforward. All part-time employees working at least a thousand forty hours in the fiscal year would receive a two hundred and fifty thousand, a two hundred and fifty dollar bonus. So, basically, what we're saying is, any part-time employee would make, the maximum they would make is two hundred and fifty dollars, 'cause they're not full-time employees. All part-time employees working at least five hundred and twenty hours will receive a hundred and twenty-five dollar bonus. And you'll notice, that's half of the ten forty, and it's half of the bonus. So, we're just, you know, prorating it down. And then, all part-time employees working at least two hundred and sixty hours will receive a sixty-two dollar and fifty cent bonus. All employees working less than two hundred and sixty hours in the fiscal year will not receive a bonus, 'cause a lot of those are just like pole workers and different people like that, and they really aren't. That's not who we intended to get with this. We intended to get our normal workforce with this. So, if we do that, what we're gonna be able to use is, the IT folks, in order to do that chart for you on full-time equivalence, they had to go through and calculate this. So, we actually have numbers where, what people work through the year. Correct, Pam?
Yes, sir.
So, we'd then be able to go through using these categories and put each employee into one of these categories and make one of four types of payments to them. We think it's a streamlined way of doing it, and it meets the intent of what we were trying to do, which was to get the bonuses out and also to treat our part-time people fairly, but, but not to spend an exorbitant amount of time calculating what, what'll be a relatively small amount of money. So, that's what we're proposing. Wanted to see if anybody had any concerns or issues on that as part of this, because obviously, we need to be able to tell IT something about going ahead and, and working this up. So, I wanted to see if everybody was okay with that, and if you are, we'd like to go ahead and, and have a motion to that effect, or if you wanna wait till the next meeting and think about it, however you wanna do it. It's not something that has to be approved today, but I wanted to go over it with you today, so that you had time to, to look at it and then give us direction on it, at least by the next meeting. So. Does anybody?
Chairman. We adopt that policy for the payment of bonuses to the county employees.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Kamara, if we accept this recommendation. The floor is open enough for discussion. Anyone else? Notice, if no other discussions, pleasure to board. All in favor, show a sign in the right hand. Motion carrying now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that's what I had. And we'll just proceed now with however you wanna proceed on.
I've got one thing I want to, pertaining to, not this current budget, but, uh, Mayo gave me yesterday, the security cameras and equipment and all that's going into the Steel Memorial Library. He had a forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars budgeted for it. He come in thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cent under budget.
Good. So, we can take that off?
That's in this year's.
That's in this year's.
That's in this year's budget.
Okay. Okay.
But it's still thirteen thousand dollars.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, I think, as we start through, I guess the best thing is just to look at, anything y'all wanna look at and open up any questions. I know several of you have been looking at it and have asked questions and have dug into it, so at this point, I'm through with my comments. We'll just open it up.
Mr. Chairman, are you okay if we just go through the tabs as far as the different departments?
Fine with me. I see enough sticky notes on the side of yours that keep busy till about six o'clock tonight.
No, 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 we're gonna kinda go through this. The first department that I have is in Human Resources.
This is the first one. If anybody got any of the first tabs, got any questions on her? I don't wanna jump ahead of anybody, but the first one I would have is on Human Resources.
It's not in the front. It's about, move away somewhere.
No, it's in the front. It's about the, let's see, border, you got border commissioners, and then dues.
Forty-one thirty-one.
County manager.
Forty-one thirty-one.
Forty-one thirty-one.
Yeah, almost two.
Yeah, gotta get it.
Forty-one thirty-one.
Forty-one thirty-one.
And, Mr. Chairman, the, the line item that I have, and I'm gonna request a cut on, would be one-ten, four-one-three, two-nine-nine, point zero-zero-one, which is safety supplies. And if you look at the history there, it's zero in two thousand twelve, thirteen. Current appropriation is twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. Actual to date is zero, so no monies have been spent, and they are having the budget for an additional twelve thousand, and I am moving that we reduce that by seven thousand dollars. That would leave five thousand dollars, which they've spent nothing. So, at least it'll leave five thousand dollars in there. So, I would ask that we reduce that by seven thousand. Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Any other discussion?
I would just, I would just like to ask, as far as any, what's your opinion of any purchase orders or encumbrances or potential encumbrances that would spend some of this between now and?
Um, their current expenditure as today, they've spent seven thousand, six twenty-six, seventy-nine.
They've spent seven thousand.
Seven, seventy-six hundred.
So, it doesn't reflect in this, so there's seven, six hundred minus, I mean, twelve thousand minus seven, six hundred. Am I looking at the right line?
You are. I think you could, but I think what he's saying is, if he cuts it back to five, I think you'd probably be okay in future years. They have taken over safety.
Right.
From OES, I believe, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew was doing.
Yeah, I did check with OES, and they seemed pretty comfortable. About a history of five thousand, maybe more than that, but.
Yeah. I knew, I knew it was gonna have some expenditures during the year, but by the time we did it, as you can see, we didn't have that. But I'm comfortable with the, with reducing it by seven.
Minus seven thousand.
Yeah. That was the only amount I saw on that one. And then, Mr. Chairman, going on further to GIS. And look, I, if anybody has a department in between, please stop me with its tax or mapping, but going to GIS was my next area. And that line item is one-ten, forty-one, forty-two, dot, three fifty-two. So, three fifty-two. And that is maintenance and repairs for equipment. And as you can see, that, that large increase there, up to eighty, and I am asking that we reduce that by ten thousand, only ten thousand.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
Now, that's a department that we ought to hear from, the gentleman run that, well, they have expenses that.
I actually spoke with him today, and he was comfortable with that.
I can, John, I can tell you what it is. The, the primary difference in that money is to upgrade our Esri computer software. And I think what he, you know, we do need to replace it, but I think what, what Chip is saying is, he can go another year if you need him to do that. I, I do wanna stress, you do need to do it at some time in the near future, 'cause I think it's about ten years old, the version we have. But, you know, but if you felt like you needed to cut it, you, he could go another year on that. But that's the difference, John, in what you're, in what you're looking at.
So, that would be, in maintenance and equipment, three fifty-two minus ten thousand. And then, and again, I'm not trying to get ahead of anybody, but you tell me to push if you want me to. The next item that I had was on information technology. And in viewing that, as you all can see on that expenditure budget, that is now at one point eight, eight million on, in that department.
Which number, ten?
And, I'm sorry.
What number, ten?
Uh, that is forty-two-ten. Forty-two-ten. And the area there, the item, one-ten, forty-two-ten, three fifty-two. Three fifty-two, and I checked with Pam on this, and this year, there's, we have spent three hundred and ninety thousand on this line item, which is less than four hundred, and they're requesting four eighty-five, nine hundred. And I'm asking for a modest decrease in that by twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars. So, that's gonna leave four sixty in that department.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I have a question about that, too, because that's, there's another department that has requirements that we may not know about. I think somebody like IT, we ought to hear from them before we cut any of the line, because they have, they are mandated to replace certain equipment at a certain time.
They are, and he's, and he has a list of what he wants to replace and things like that, but, you know, it, it just depends on, you know, whether, whether or not you think you could cut back somewhat on that. It is a four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar line item.
Well, had you finished?
Yeah.
Mr. Kamara.
Speaking of this one and the previous one, just so we'll get a sort of benchmark of what, how we're gonna work this thing. Now, what I always was under assumption of, Mr. Manis, that those folk could come in, and you all had looked at all the kind of things that could be done, might be done, would love to have done, maybe done this year, worth the next. And based upon that, over these last several weeks and several months, I had always assumed that you all had worked that out, and it gotten down to those points. Now, in all respect to the people in the department and each one of us, I do, I would not want each one of us to, because we would approach someone and say, can you cut it? They feel pressured to cut it.
Yeah.
And, and we could, you know, you could cut anything, but you see, that's sort of drifting back to some of the habits we had last year. Pick a dollar amount and see if someone will let you cut it or say something about it. And I, I'm, I feel this tinge that if you, if you walk up to one of the managers and say, well, you got five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, can you cut twenty of it? And he's gonna evaluate whether or not you need to cut it or not. And, and Mr. Doctor, it's not just that you brought this up, it's just that I feel it that personally. So, if, if this budget, having the give and take that I believe it has, unless, I, I just have a little bit uncomfortable saying that the manager out there or the department head said, yeah, well, I can get by by not doing this. If it was discussed, and that department needs to do it to stay even, or to be ready for next year. I do have a little bit of a problem saying, well, let's cut fifteen, let's cut ten, 'cause that looks like you're just looking for some dollars to cut regardless of whether it was needed to, and just of, just picking up on what Mr. Bell said, but I'm, I'm not, I don't know where we're looking at.
So, basically, here's what I'm saying.
Okay.
He has a budget of one point eight, eight-two million dollars. We're talking about a little over one percent reduction. I do not think that that in any way will hamper his mission or his accomplishments as such. I don't think that, that a cut of that magnitude in any way will affect the mission. And yes, when I went through this budget, I was trying to find those areas that we, in fact, could have additional cuts. That was the reason why I went through the budget. So, I, I really don't see that that should be any problem whatsoever of a twenty thousand dollar reduction, so, at any rate. You were right, we could just basically approve it and not even go through and look at anything, but I think our job is to find ways to reduce spending where possible, because I can assure you, we're gonna need some monies as we launch out here to do these capital improvements that are on our, on our radar right now.
All I'm saying is, and I'm not saying we need to give it, just say blanket approval, but if we work through each one of these with the idea that we're just going to cut X number of dollars to save X number of dollars, and then add that total up and say, this is what we saved, I'm asking the question, are we not tripling the department, Mr. Doctor, or are we holding it back based upon, obviously, the conversation the department heads and the manager has already had?
I understand. That's all. Anyway, I recommend that we do, in fact, reduce that by twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars on that line item.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. While we're on that, too, I just had this, yeah, I'm looking at line five-twenty for that capital outlay of computers. That's a pretty big jump from what, you know, last year to this year.
Which number is that? Which?
Uh, it's one-ten, four, two, one, zero, five-twenty. Get from a hundred and thirty-five thousand to four hundred and three. What's in that?
The primary things there are the data storage, we've got to make a major investment in that. And then the other major investment is the phone system. And we're at a point now where the software on the phone system will no longer be supported.
I mean, is that what happened this year, or is it gonna?
Yeah. Yeah. So, the question becomes, you know, if you want to cut any of that.
Or, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doran.
Or some other alternatives of funding.
Yeah.
And is there any other way?
Well, you can, yeah, you could look at splitting some of that, you know, like the phone system, you might finance over a couple of years or something like that, and put half in this year and half in next year. I think the phone system needs to be done, so I would recommend you delete it, but you could do the timing of it like that, if you wanna do that.
So, if we, if we did have it over two calendar years, we could have fifty-five in this year, fifty-five in the following year.
Right.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Well, they still got what they need.
Yeah.
But that would reduce our budget this year by fifty-five.
By fifty-five, and then you're pushing it back into the next year, and because in all likelihood, we can, we'll probably get around to a time you go through, spec it out and all of that, and install it, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna take some time to move through everything anyway, so you finance, you put it over a two-year period. You can do that.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I'm understanding, I mean, I, I had serious problems with a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a phone system, but I am sure that we're gonna go through an RFQ process and give that price to them, but that's just an estimate.
And Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna be able to keep a lot of the handsets and things like that. This is actually the guts of it. This is in the back room part, is where, is where all the- This is in the back room part, is where, is where all this is. This is not the handsets themselves.
It says components include Cisco Call Manager, Publisher and Subscriber, Unity Messaging, Cisco Emergency Responder, IPCC for call queuing for SSS and Microsoft Exchange Upgrade.
There's a lot more to a phone system today than it looks like.
So that's number 520? Is that number 520?
Yeah.
And you're cutting that how much?
Just refinancing.
Yeah, we're just going to have it over...
Basically saying you would do it over two years.
Yeah, we'll just do it over two years. 55 this year and 55 the following year.
Steve.
Which is common, common in government that you carried on.
You're going to keep on the phone system, you're going to keep the handsets running.
Yes.
This is the guts we're talking about.
Yes, it's there, it's going into life and the manufacturer will report it.
Yeah, the phone system, the handsets, the actual phones themselves are not being replaced, but the guts of the phone system have to be replaced. We were notified by the manufacturer they're going end of life, and we have to upgrade the system. So that is what that piece of it is.
Okay.
Excuse me, when is end of life?
Do you know the exact date, Chris?
Sometime within, I think, the next two, two or three quarters.
Yeah, I don't have the, I was unprepared, I didn't know I was going to be coming up here.
No, that's not, Steve, the, I think the question is, like, if we were able to, by the time we get everything through and order it and then start installing it, we'd like to see about phasing it in where it's on financially, it's half one, in one fiscal year and then finish up in July, August of the next fiscal year. So you're basically splitting that cost over a two-year, a two-year fiscal cycle, but it would all be one project.
It's kind of impossible to do that.
Come on, come on.
I don't, I don't know how you can, how we could do that unless it was the implementation cost.
Or the financing, or the financing of it.
Yeah, it's kind of an all or nothing. When you start replacing your phone system, you're replacing all of the equipment at one time. You can't, you know, replace just a portion of it and then replace another portion. And as Steve said, you know, it might be you buy the hardware, but then do implementation later. But the implementation costs typically negligible compared to the overall cost of the equipment.
So if we were going, if we did want to split it, then we need to be looking at whether or not we wanted to finance it. You go ahead and do it, but we, the way you'd split it would be to finance it over two years, if you want to do that.
Or you have the invoice, invoice a portion of it in June of one fiscal year and July of the following. In other words, you have the invoicing on half and the other half a month later. So you ought to be able to arrange the invoicing in such a way that it spreads across you.
You could have two options, you could, you could do a purchase order on the total amount in, late in the fiscal year. And then you just don't actually start the project for a month or two. Or either you could schedule the project for July 15 and go ahead and encompass the 55 you've got this year, carry it forward to the next year to add it on to the, the next fiscal year.
What they're trying to do is, is do, is split it, do 55 in one year, 55 in the next year, from a budgetary standpoint.
Yeah.
But not, but not stand in the way of getting the project.
Okay, in that scenario, how would we create a PO for the total project? Typically vendors won't, you know, it's kind of, kind of hard to split a project evenly with hardware. Because, you know, it's our understanding that, number one, we're not supposed to have a PO and pay for something before we actually receive it. And two, it'd be kind of hard to have part of the equipment billed in one year and then part of the equipment billed in another year. Because the vendor, we have to go through a third party to purchase, you don't buy direct from the manufacturer. And so you have, they're going to expect the PO for all of the equipment that they're going to be ordering.
Well, let me ask you this, on the storage, the data storage, is that something that lends itself to being split? Or is that all, all it does, one piece of?
Now, the data, are we referring to 2015, 16? Or are we referring to 2014, 15? Because we have...
You have data storage in there.
Are we talking about CIP? Because we have data storage, we have maintenance, we have actual replacement. It depends on what fiscal year.
Steve, you have 220,000 in capital, computers for store server backup and recovery appliance at 220,000.
Okay, that's, that's one full system.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought, and that does not lend itself to splitting out.
No.
So if we were looking at splitting something that should be the phone system, even if it's to finance it. But that, you know, that's y'all's call as to what you want to do there.
Yeah, the, the capital item that Pam just mentioned, that is one device. That's what backs up, we use to back up all of the county data every night. And that device is at its end of life. We are basically out of disc shelves, we cannot add any more space to it. The system is seven, eight years old now.
It, it comes up end of life in 2016.
But it's not just end of life, it's the fact that the thing is pretty much full.
Yes, yeah, we can't, we can't add anything else to that type of device.
I think that was one of the questions also as to why we needed it.
Yeah, we're at a point now where we have no choice but to move to a, you know, the technology over the last three or four years is completely different than it was eight years ago when we put this system in. But the storage requirements of the county are significantly different than when we initially put this system in. When we put this system in, there were no paperless requirements. We didn't have Laserfish, which scanned all the medical records and all of those things.
My question is, you mean that whoever you're buying all this equipment from cannot accept payment over 60 days?
That, they don't normally, we may be able to, I don't, I don't want to answer that question definitively because I don't know the answer.
Let me ask this question.
But...
Sure.
That's just not typically how we, how we do business with them, so.
Maybe it's not typically, but the point is, most companies will allow you 60 to 90 days to pay, and there's no problem. Now, you may typically always bought it, paid cash upfront, not worried about it. I'm just saying, if we change that to where we actually are acquiring, these are major investments.
Oh, I understand that.
And in fact, we were able to invoice those to, to a purveyor, to a company, to where they got half of it in one fiscal year and the other half in the next fiscal year. I mean, that's all we're asking. It's not a matter of cutting the entire program, we're just saying we want it scattered over two years.
But that means that these projects, we couldn't actually do implementation until
June.
One year away.
That's correct.
So if, if they're going to, if we're going to do partial payments, that means that we would be paying them part of it, say, in May, June of the 2014, 15 budget year, and then paying the balance, if I'm understanding correctly, for the 15, 16 year.
In July, August.
Which means we couldn't do that project until the 15, 16 year, so it'd be after July 1st of next year.
Well, no, I think Pam, can't you, can't you do a purchase order and then...
The other thing we can do is if they reserve the funds in that balance, then we can reappropriate the project, carry the 55 forward into the 15, 16 year and, and fund the whole project at 15, 16. But that will put the project off a year.
Yeah, it puts it off a year.
So may I ask this, just to see? We're not talking about, you're not doing the project, we're talking about splitting it. And it sounds to me like we're talking about splitting it over maybe 60 days. If we're talking about the tail end of one fiscal year and beginning of another one. But it sounds like by 2016, the whole thing will be done. So it sounds like that what we want to do is simply not pay it all in one year to satisfy the budget process versus satisfying the activity. I mean, I can't see it no other way.
I am, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I, I, I just don't know the answer. What we need to do when we leave here is check with the vendor and say, look, this is the scenario, is this a possibility? Can we do this?
When I was a director in the school system, first comes what you're doing. It would be like asking me to set up a computer lab and to satisfy the budget process per half of it one year and half of another. And when I knew in my heart and the vendor there, knew we need to have all the computers, the hardware, the software and the wiring and the everything there so it could be done. And I only say this, if what we're doing is asking them to spread it over two years so that we can have a payment over two years to have a smaller budget in one year, it's still going to have to be paid. And by, if we play with it over 14, 15, 15, 16, by the end of 16, it's going to have to be all paid anyway.
I know typically with a project, with a project like, like in this room, there's, there's equipment, there's installation, there's maintenance and all these other things. That could actually be broken up because it's a project. You could say, okay, you know, we're going to complete the project in six months, but we're going to start the implementation in June. And we're going to finish the implementation in August between the fiscal years. And that would be fairly easy to do that. But when you're ordering a store server, which is a piece of equipment, you're asking the vendor to say, hey, look, we don't want to pay for all of this equipment right now. We want to pay half of it now and we want to pay half of it next year. I don't know if they will do that. That's all I'm saying is, you know, it's like buying a car and saying, hey, you know what, I'll pay half of it, but you know, you've got to foot the rest.
Mr. Chairman, let's just move on. If you all will check with your vendors and try to find the best way that we can possibly trim and pay for this over two fiscal years, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Wool, what, what are the benefits of doing it this way? You know, if we have the money to buy the equipment so they can do the project? I mean, why do we have to stretch it over two years? There's not that much money involved.
It's y'all's call as to what, whether you want to do it over two years or not. The, I guess the benefit would be is that the budget this year would be smaller. And then you are splitting it over a two-year period. I mean, Ed's comment is right that at, at the end of the two-year period, you spent $110,000 on the project.
Okay.
So it really just comes down to what y'all want to do as far as how much money you want to allocate this year. But it's not unusual to split projects, particularly bigger projects, if that's what you want to do.
Okay, based on your budget that you are getting ready to present to us. Then you said we, we does not have a tax increase and it's going to be a balanced budget based on what you have submitted already?
Right.
And I don't understand why we are playing with it so hard. And you're already presenting a balanced budget to us with no excess spending.
And it's going to hamper, I mean, in my mind, based upon similar things that I've done, not to that, but similar things that I've been involved in in my previous life. Those kind of things serve to hamper the implementations of projects when they are like this. I can see some things could be split, but...
In the case of our phone system, end of life, which means end of support, is going to be coming up before June, July of next year.
Of next year, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we not do the project. I, you know, I think I made that clear, that we need to do the project. The question is whether you want to split it over a period of time or not. I don't, obviously, from the conversation, the data storage does not lend itself to splitting in a, in a part year.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dr.
Let me answer some questions. We're pulling 600 and some odd thousand dollars out of reserve in order to beat the budget.
690.
That's correct. And so I was simply trying to find a way to go ahead and reduce spending this year so we wouldn't pull it out of the savings account. Now, that may mean that we do something that's a little bit different, but I think that we need to. Because I don't see the reason to pull it out unless absolutely necessary. So I would ask that you all go back and see if you can find some way to accommodate our goal of spreading it over two years. And, and when you speak of the fact that this goes out of service in the next few months, the phone system is not going to go dead in three months. So let's use proper terminology.
Is the trouble getting support if you have it.
That's correct, that's correct. But it's not going to go pout. And all of a sudden, on a day, it goes dead.
This phone system might run another, you know, several years.
That's right. And not only that, it's kind of like XP, I've still got computers with XP on it, even though the end of life of that had been several years back. Right? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let's move on and we'll come back to that.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I have, the next one is facilities. I'd like for us to take a look at that. The, the line, line 110-4260.352. The 500,000 is 2014, 2015 requested. And you got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're recommending, and this has been approved through the facility director, Milford Smith, that we can, we can live with a reduction of $50,000 from that line item, which will make it, the request is 450.
And this is which line, best three numbers, Mr. Mayor?
352.
350.
352.
Reduced by how much, Mr. Mayor?
By 50,000.
And he's discussed that with me, I'm, I'm okay with it. Because these are the kinds of items that if something big does go down, we'll have to come back to you with a budget amendment. But I think Milford feels comfortable, it'd probably be okay for a year. So I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pam.
I was going to ask a question about the sheriff's department, but this is letter, I don't know if you need to.
Yeah, I think those are in it.
I was looking at it.
I think they're in it.
Yes, yes.
I won't waste Mr.'s time on that, then.
So let me do point out on that letter, that's 114,708 dollars that the sheriff has found ways to fund other than through our budget.
Yeah, and I...
So that's a major, major difference.
Well, I'd like to compliment him because I tell you, he also had cut his budget already. So he has gone through, you know, and done a very good job on his budget. And again, like I said, with some of this, we still feel like we can get some of this. We just will be using his, I call it drug seizure money, you know, it's where, it's where the courts turn money on to us on those court cases. And again, if you look at the history of it, we'll probably have enough to do that. But the problem is, you can't, you know, you can't guarantee it. We got to, we'd like to be conservative and make sure we got the money before we commit to it.
Okay.
So that's concluded. Any questions on the sheriffs? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, thank you. Next, jail.
Yeah, anytime anybody will come forward and say, I can trim the budget by 114, we don't, we don't want to ask for any more, but that's too expensive.
And on top of the fact that he had already cut it. He did, he did a very good job.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is jails. Item number 110-4311-193. Many new ears have on this, but I think we can have a professional services, services medical. We are in the process of changing medical provider for the jail. And my understanding is that the new provider is coming in about $35,000 underwater.
That's correct, that's the contract you guys table today.
Yeah.
So we know this is solid, it's going to be a savings. We know what the dollar amount is. That, the dollar amount wasn't what you had a concern about, it was a couple of the minor things. So, so that is there, that will be there.
And the good thing that, Mr. Chairman, is going from 350 and only cutting it 35, it's still going to be more than enough than what that contract's calling for, so.
Yeah, we're good, we're, we're good with it. The other thing, not to get off the subject, but this contract is actually, not only are we going to save money, we're going to provide more nursing service.
Better service.
Better service. If I remember right, about eight more or 11 more hours a day of nursing than we're getting now. So it's, it's a big improvement.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
You know, I just wanted to understand that even though we might cut it back and we may not use all that money, well, they can get one or two inmates over there that can just wipe the whole budget out.
Well, I want to be clear, this is, this is on, this is on what they do inside. If somebody has the kind of serious illness you're speaking of, John, we typically, that typically comes, goes on the outside. It wouldn't be under this contract.
This is strictly care, whether over here, this is...
Yeah, it's, it's in jail care, I guess is the best way to put it. But Mr. Bell makes a good point, you know, I want to stress that, and I think y'all know this, but when we arrest somebody, they're ours. You know, they're released. And so, you know, if they have a major problem, we bought it. You know, they're released. And so, you know, if they have a major problem, we bought it. And that's why on a lot of these, we try to get people bonded out just as fast as we can. The problem is, it's not when we arrest them, it's when anybody arrests. We got to take everybody that gets arrested in the county. Yeah, you're, you're the jail for everybody in the county. Mount Olive brings somebody in, and our Goldsboro, but the minute they turn them over and we book them, they're out.
Mr. Chairman, uh, over on to, on that same category in five forty. So that would be under capital outlay vehicles.
Uh, jail?
Under jail. So forty-three eleven five forty. There's fifty-six thousand and seventeen dollars in there. Uh, that is for two vehicles, a Tahoe and a Charger, and I'm recommending that that be removed.
Mr. Chairman, is any vehicles?
What else?
Any vehicles?
Well, yeah, it's, it's for the transport of, of, uh, inmates and things like that. Remember, depending on where we have to take people, for instance, uh, uh, when somebody goes through trial here and they get convicted, uh, we have to actually take them to the state prison. They're in our custody until such time. We have to transport them.
And they transport juveniles?
And transport juveniles, things like that. So you do need, you do need vehicles. These are replacements. These are not.
What my question really should have clarified was, are the other vehicles just more to out where we?
Well, uh, they feel like they are, you know, the question is if you could go another year, uh, and I think that's what it comes down to.
Well, the other thing is, do understand we're buying new vehicles over the sheriff's department, and those are gonna be surplus. And so there'll be enough vehicles in regards to transporting prisoners, uh, to get us through that year.
Does it take a special vehicle to, to transport them?
Well.
I mean, not a special vehicle, especially equipped vehicle.
Yeah. I mean, you can transport one person in the back of a, a patrol car. It depends on, on the transport, you know, some people use transport vans. You look, you see them, they're kinda like, uh, not quite, well, a little bit like a panel truck, something like that, and then you put the cage in there. Um, but that's not what they're requesting. They're requesting, uh, a sedan and then a, um, an SUV is what they're requesting.
And they feel like they need these? Or they put in the base for them?
They, they put in the request for them.
Now, I wanna say this about vehicles. Are these new? They're, they're newer than what they have now, if not brand new?
Oh, these would be new.
Okay, and I was.
They give them a state contract.
And I was, I just wanna make clear what we were talking about.
Yeah, these, these would be new, Ed.
I'll only make a comparison. I have a two thousand Expedition that's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. I elected to get a new Silverado. Not that the Expedition wouldn't take me where I had been going, but when I got ready to go a further distance, I was reluctant to use that two thousand Expedition. So it's not that you can't be transported, it's if you've got a certain client group, you wanna make sure that the vehicle's gonna get you there and back. So, gentlemen, I only say that we're relying upon the professional attitude of the people who ask for this stuff, to see if they can get to where they need to be and get back. And, and sometimes a vehicle with a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, it may get you there, but you kinda feel like that new one's gonna get you there in a much safer, faster, more efficient manner. So just to say that some more may be available is not the answer, I think. We just gotta rely on the fact these folks say they need a better, newer vehicle to get their transportation done. And I just say they got some other vehicles off plate that's stills. They need these.
Is there any discussion with them as to whether they could wait another year?
Uh, I can go back to them and talk about it.
First of all, I, I, I personally have somewhat of a problem of buying a Tahoe for the detention center. I, I just have a problem with that. Uh, a prisoner can be t- can be transported on something other than a Tahoe. So I, I just want to eliminate them entirely, uh, un- un- until there's a better justification. Uh, there'll be plenty of patrol cars. In fact, the sheriff's department has plenty of Tahos as it is, uh, if they needed a Tahoe. So there, there are plenty of vehicles at the sheriff's department that we do not need to spend taxpayers' dollars for fifty-six thousand dollars on two vehicles on the detention center. Uh, that's one. Number two, we, we already got enough on our plate in regards to the detention center. Uh, so I, 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 I'd recommend that we just eliminate those. We've eliminated them in the past. I just think that that's one place where we can eliminate.
Well, once y'all go through whatever you're gonna put on the table, what I'd suggest is then you just vote on each one.
Okay.
Individually as they come through. Because you're gonna have differences of opinion on these things. That's normal, you know? So I think just continue on, uh, looking through anything anybody wants to look at, and then we get through.
We'll go back and vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that you go through.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I just have one question. Before we approve or disapprove anything, are we gonna go back to somebody like the sheriff and for him to justify?
Yeah, anything you ask me to check on, um, I'll be happy to do that. And, and you, you know, you vote on the budget on the seventeenth. So anytime between now and the seventeenth, I can go back and get you information you want on anything, bring it back in here, uh, and then we can discuss it.
Well, before we leave this page, I'm not, I'm not hung up on whether it's a Tahoe or a Suburban or a whatever. I want to know they have a vehicle, and if they're requesting new vehicles. And I'm, I'm not, hadn't, had the opportunity to look through purchase contracts which were Jesus. But my thing is, a new vehicle versus, not talking about the, the style of it or nothing, a new vehicle that will get those dividends there with their clients in it, in a safe, efficient manner, not to say we're gonna put them out there to rely on the older vehicle when they feel like that they've already ran the course, so.
Well, we can, you know, we, I'll, I'll discuss it with them, and then if, uh, we feel like it's necessary, we'll have them come in and explain it to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just comment on this now. You know, before y'all make me out, we're putting nineteen forty-eight, uh, sedans out there in the department. I can assure you, they do have vehicles currently to transport, and they are operating today without these two brand-new vehicles, and they will operate tomorrow as well. So I, I, I just don't, I think we're making a tip side.
Mr. Chairman, one final thing.
Okay.
I think we need, I think we need to let Commissioner Doyle just approve this budget and move on.
We're getting there. We're halfway there.
Okay, moving on.
Go out of my.
Moving on, I got a, I've been talking to Mel over OES, and, uh, under, uh,
Forty-three twenty-five.
Forty-three twenty-five, nine-one-one telephone.
What, what?
Forty-three twenty-five.
Forty-three.
Can't get any better focus just right.
Uh, on the first page, the last item, forty-three twenty-five, three fifty-two.
Forty-three twenty-five.
Three fifty-two.
Three fifty-two.
Three five.
Uh, and all I did was ask Mel if any word that he could, uh, sharpen his pencil a little bit, and on this particular item, he says he thinks, well, he doesn't think, he says he can, come off twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Alpha five, line three fifty-two?
Uh, yes, ma- yes, sir.
And, and Mr. Chairman, while we're on that page.
He can take off twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And while we're on that page, if we would go to one ninety-nine. This is a big one, folks. Uh, on one ninety-nine, we have just approved in this year's budget the Critical Mission Contract for forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. It's already gonna be funding so we can reduce that line item of one ninety-nine by forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, too. We, we found the money in the current year's budget from the savings, so we went ahead. When you ex- you know, when you approved that contract, Mel went ahead, so we're putting that in the current year. So we can take it out of the, out of next year's.
Says.
And how much was that?
Forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
That was one ninety-nine?
Uh, yes, so one ninety-nine.
The current request was seventy-three thousand?
Forty-eight one.
Forty-eight one fifty. Is that what the current request is, seventy-three thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
They had requested seventy-seven three ten, but it didn't include that, and we've already, we've allocated monies for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna be clear now, we're only, we're only taking out the forty-eight one.
That's correct.
Okay.
The forty-eight one fifty.
I'm putting a square around that one so that I'll know that there's a real reason for.
Yeah.
For I do so.
Okay. Let, let me go over here to, uh, the inspect, inspections, um, uh, which is forty-three fifty. And as we all know, uh, in inspections, uh, the demand has greatly decreased. Uh, we, we're not building, uh, the economy is not rebounding there. And thereby, I would request that we eliminate on line item, ooh, let me find it, five forty. On five forty, there's thirty-nine thousand dollars requested for two new vehicles, and I'm requesting that we s- uh, cut that back to one new vehicle. So that would be a reduction of, uh, nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. And again, these, these are vehicles, uh, that the inspectors are in fact using, but they're just not putting that many more miles on them or such. So on that one, we will buy one vehicle this year, and possibly next year, we will buy another vehicle.
And that you discussed that with somebody?
I, I have not discussed that one. I have not. Uh, yes, they'd love to have three or four new vehicles, but one is what I'm recommending that we, so we cut back one.
So they requesting two?
That's correct.
Then next year, when you buy the other one, it'll cost a thousand dollars more.
Well, I definitely. And, and then moving on to, uh, forty-three eighty, which is animal control.
It's ought to be good.
This is an a- th- th- this is an oddity.
I'm sorry, Mr. Darling, how much did you wanna cut that one back?
Which one?
The previous one.
Uh, one vehicle, which was nineteen five.
Miles nineteen five.
We, we had him, Ed, we had him for two vehicles at thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, two vehicles in thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah. Okay, on, on this one.
We're gonna let one of the guys walk.
Now, wait, he already answered.
No, he, I'm sorry.
One guy can have a segue.
A segue, okay. Uh, on four ninety-nine, on four ninety-nine, this is adoption reimbursement. If you look across that line, there's twenty-five dollars that was actually spent in twelve thirteen. There was budgeted twelve thousand, but as of February, they spent zero. And she's requesting ten thousand in this year's budget, and I am recommending we cut that in half. If they are not spending with twenty-five dollars, five thousand dollars is enough on that line item. So I recommend that we cut that to four ninety-nine from ten thousand to five thousand.
Forty-three eighty.
Pam.
Yes, sir.
Can you look at that and see if they have anything in there now?
Which one we got?
Uh, that is.
Four nine five.
Four ninety-nine on forty-three eighty.
Third from the bottom.
They have twelve thousand budgeted in the thirteen fourteen year and have spent zero in it to date.
Spent zero.
Still zero.
At twenty-five.
So cutting it in half, we're still leaving on five thousand to spend zero next year.
Does that mean we're not paying for spay and ewe?
Yeah, I think it's cut back on that.
All right, and then moving to sixty-one ten. I know I jumped way ahead here. But on the library.
Tab sixty-one ten.
Tab sixty-one ten, library. Okay, um, on three thirty, which is the second page, on three thirty, under utilities, as we discussed today, we've got budgeted in here eighty-eight thousand dollars, but Mount Olive is picking up the utility, the electric for the library. So, uh, in discussing that, we felt like a reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars on that line item should more than cover the cost of the electricity.
Yeah, and, and I'll say on that, I was not aware that they had made that commitment. Uh, but once we found that out, then we, we looked at what we're paying on the Goldsboro branch. So we're kinda using that as a, as a gauge here, because it's, electricity is not the only utility. You got, you know, water and sewer, you got internet and all that.
Sure. I was just gonna ask this question, and I'm no doubt. Do you have somebody in writing for Mount Olive that said they were gonna do that?
Well, we're getting ready to call them.
I asked what I, I, I'll tell you.
No, I, I've got a note to call Charles Brown on that and the mayor.
But let me say, I, I got the word of the mayor and the, and the town manager, and if that ain't good enough, I don't know what else.
Well.
That's right.
I'm not gonna tell you if that's not good enough.
No, Ed, your point, your point's well made. We're gonna confirm that.
I talked with him yesterday, and he assured me that they would.
Oh, just would want to, like, to assume that, that something, something that wasn't.
We'll get to it.
Joe, did you say you have talked to him?
I, I talked to him yesterday.
And he said, okay?
He said, yes, he remembered that conversation. He says, we were hoping you'd forget it.
Those guys seem to have amnesia about, about parking lot across the street, you know, paving it. So we have to remind them, okay?
So let, let's do get it.
I will say, let me mention that, uh, 'cause the last word we got on that was, all kidding aside, is they're kinda waiting on that until all the construction's done, not just with us, but on that memorial.
Yeah.
But that way, when you put the new pavement down, you don't have the heavy trucks.
That's right, and it's a staging area.
Right, right. So I do wanna say that I, uh, all kidding aside, I think they're gonna take care of it, but there, that's the delay on that.
And, and I, uh, the, the next item is on that same, on the library, on five forty. On five forty.
But how much did you put, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, that's twenty-five thousand dollars on there.
Mine's twenty-five.
That should more than, it should be fine.
And that's a, and there's no effect to the library on that. It's just to transfer the cost over to Mount Olive.
Uh, and then going back to five forty on, uh, vehicles, there's twenty-two five i- in that. And the research that I've found on that is that they're currently have a Ford Escape, which has eighty-eight thousand miles on it, and they want to eliminate that by another vehicle. And, uh, having eighty-eight thousand miles on the vehicle would not be justifiable enough to eliminate that. So I am requesting that we eliminate that twenty-two thousand dollars and let them get a few more miles on that vehicle. Uh, because eighty-eight thousand does not justify buying a vehicle. And then over here, uh, on Steel Memorial Library. I'm just joking. Trying to get a rock side of it over there.
No, uh, I, I wasn't allowed to point on eighty-eight thousand. I wasn't allowed to point on eighty-eight thousand.
I appreciate it.
Because you're talking about, I mean, I'm saying, I, I put a few more miles on my car than that.
Well, I did, I will say this. I think her concern going forward, I don't have a problem with, you know, getting another year out of it and that sort of thing. Her concern going forward is, is that we run what's called a courier service between the branches. You know, as, when people turn books in or you have to get new books down there, you run a courier service, and you do that up to, uh, your other two libraries to the north also, although on a smaller scale. The Mount Olive Library obviously has a much smaller circulation now than it's going to have. And so she's gonna be concerned about, uh, capacity. But I don't disagree, at eighty-eight thousand miles, we should try to get some more miles out of it. But long term, you're probably gonna be looking at something like a panel truck or something like that that has more of a cargo.
I agree with that.
Carrying capacity.
And maybe she can determine that over the next year in regards.
Oh, yeah, because next year won't be a guesstimate. You, you run it a year, you'll know.
And it should be over a hundred at that point.
And we're gonna be looking at the fact they'll need a larger, different vehicle, like the manager said.
That's right.
Do that job.
Cutting that next year.
Let's, let's, let's see what we need first.
Right, we'll do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, you know, at eighty-eight thousand, she can go another year with it. And then we'll see what we got. What, what may result is we'll make more frequent trips this year because it's a smaller capacity.
Right. And that's all I've got on the library.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I was, uh, looking at, uh, Wayne Community College, um, this five, this fifty-nine twenty-two.
It's five, it's fifty-nine twenty-two.
It's on the yellow tab.
Yeah, it's on the yellow tab.
Fifty-nine twenty-two. W C C fund?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
W C C in the yellow tab.
One twenty-one, uh, fifty-nine twenty-two point six thirty.
Fifty-two twenty-one, six thirty.
Fifty-nine twenty-two point six thirty. One twenty-one. Fifty-nine twenty-two point six thirty.
Yeah, I see.
Uh, this capital projects, I was auditorium face four. Uh, and we, we, we have talked to Kay Allison, we wanna reduce that line item by thirty thousand dollars. She says it's not gonna be a problem at all. And, and also, on that, uh. On that same line item, uh, fifty-nine twenty-two point six thirty, there's a, a, a capital projects, uh, what is that, equinox? What's that for?
It's a vehicle, I think, equinox.
Yeah, it's an all-wheel drive. Yeah, and, and we would take, uh, another twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, off of that.
Um, Mr. Mel, I lost you a minute.
Well, actually, if you'll look right behind that sheet, where you got, uh, fifty-nine twenty-two, six thirty, then it's got a listing of capital projects.
Yeah.
Right behind that, and there's two items off of that on list.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Different kind of page, aren't we?
And they, uh. Kay and her staff have been talked through on this, on this two item. They do not have a problem with it.
And that's great, because that's, uh, that's fifty-four.
Fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five.
I got one on EMS train.
Is that the EMS fund?
It's sixty, six twenty-two. Forty-three seventy. Three ninety-five. Training.
Thank you, Greg, if I can?
Three ninety-five.
EMS, six twenty-two.
EMS, six twenty-two.
And I've also talked to Mel about this. Maybe some of the training maybe they've already taken care of, or not gonna be needed. Then how they showing, uh, sixty-five thousand, one nineteen. He's saying we can drop that twenty-five thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars.
He's comfortable with that. There he is. EMS.
What was that, Mr. Chairman, was on?
It's at three ninety-five. Three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five.
Well, if you look at the history there, on twelve thirteen, they only spent five fifteen. Uh, actual for thirteen fourteen, and, and that was as of February, is that right, Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Uh, was five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so it's still gonna leave him forty thousand in that account.
And if y'all got any doubt, I can go back and talk to him, but I, but I talked to him yesterday.
I know, I, I mean, if, if he's thinking he can make it work.
And then I got two more here. And that was with the, um, solid waste, which was six twenty-four. Right behind that, that tab right next behind it. I talked to Tim Rogers, he was out of town yesterday, and he is saying that he is very comfortable in reducing, uh, three fifty-one and three fifty-two by twenty thousand each. Uh, let me find it here. Where we got it? Three fifty-one. And that is maintenance and repair on building and grounds by twenty thousand. And three fifty-two is maintenance and repairs on equipment by twenty thousand. So he is, uh, saying he is comfortable with reducing those two line items by twenty thousand.
Now, now, I wanna stress to you on that one, that is not general fund supported, that's fee supported.
I understand.
Okay.
But it is included in our budget.
Oh, it is included, there's no question about that. I'm just saying if, if, so, and if any of that large equipment does go down, of course, we're gonna have to repair it, but I just wanted to make it clear that that forty thousand does not have an impact on the general fund one way or the other.
Okay, all right.
And, and just to add something to what Mr. Wood is saying. That equipment out there, if I, if I'm thinking about it, that equipment takes a quick.
It's huge, yeah, oh, yeah, it's a, it's about as bad an environment as you can operate.
And, and now, of all the things we're talking about. It'd be better to leave it and let it carry over in some fashion, and take it out and put them in a, well, they have to come back for budget meeting, if one of those pieces go down.
Well, I brought, I, I brought that up for a reason, because, you know, that one won't matter one way or the other, in terms of the general fund. Uh, so, I mean, you can cut it if you want, or you can leave it in, as long as we have an understanding that if one of those big pieces of equipment goes down, we gotta fix it.
Well, we do that.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda like a fire truck, you're gonna fix it, it's just a question of.
Tim heard I was trying to find some reductions in spending, and he wanted to contribute.
Okay.
So. So this is another one of those, if we reduce it, it just makes the budget look better.
Well, it'll make the solid waste budget look better, it won't, it doesn't do anything for the general.
For the overall budget.
Yeah, well, it decreases the overall budget by forty. Uh, okay. But the reduction will be in the solid waste fund.
And if I could inquire, Mr. Chairman, how, how much in our recommended budget was being, uh, used from reserve, six hundred?
Six hundred and ninety.
Six hundred and ninety thousand?
Right, isn't that right, Pam?
Yes, sir.
That's what I had, Pam.
That was taken out of the reserve budget with this whole thing?
Yeah, if you remember, if you remember what I was saying on fund balances, is that we don't actually anticipate spending it, but, uh, you, you did appropriate six hundred and ninety thousand dollars of fund balance. In there. So the question is, um, you know, if, if you're gonna make these cuts, my recommendation to you would be is just reduce the amount of fund balance you're gonna appropriate. Because at some point, you're gonna, you're gonna have, uh, budget amendments. For instance, one of them, we haven't talked about yet, is this eastern region money. Uh, we put, under debt service, we put in the one we knew about, but the one today, you literally just closed on, and not closed, but you decided on today. So we, and we don't know how much is gonna be split with Goldsboro, Mount Olive, or someone else on that, so we have not calculated that yet, so we, we will come back to you with a budget amendment on that. So that's why, and, and then there are a couple of other things that we know will probably, uh, well, the advanced manufacturing center, if you should move forward with that, you've got some issues, you've got some costs there on the operating. So my recommendation would be, if you do these cuts, that I would simply reduce the use of fund balance. And, and then we know we're gonna have those, those two things coming back, but we can't determine them today, so those will be add, add-ons to use fund balance. But it certainly positions you better going forward into the fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman? I move that we adopt those, uh, reductions in spending, and those totals come to six hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Uh, and that we reflect that in changing the budget to not use, uh, those dollars from our reserve funds, is that?
Yeah.
So we would reduce.
Right, you, you'll take the general fund down by all but forty thousand of that, and then the, and then forty thousand of it will come off of the solid waste fund, isn't that correct, Pam?
They also used, uh, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and nineteen in EMS, which is six twenty-two.
So you'd have to change that around as well.
Yeah.
But you, you all run the numbers and put it from their proper thing.
Yeah, we'll run the numbers, so basically, everything but seventy-five thousand dollars hits the general fund, reducing the general fund fund balance use.
So if I'm looking at that, I have just rough numbers here, probably around five hundred and twenty-five, five-thirty or so is actually coming from the re- from the general fund. Uh, so that basically is offsetting the cost of the raises for the, for the employees. I mean, that's kinda the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause that's five hundred thousand.
Yeah. Uh, but I, I move that we adopt those, uh, changes in the budget.
Motion on the floor, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend Commissioner Dawid's motion, and give the county manager an opportunity to get with the department to make sure these cuts that we are talking about decreasing will not hamper their operation. That's what we said a few minutes ago, that we're gonna give him an opportunity to do that.
I have a motion on the floor, and amendment, when you go on the amendment first.
Mr., could I inquire? Mr. Wood, uh, based upon the amendment, uh, you feel comfortable that you can reach out to them and verify that it's not gonna negatively impact their mission?
Well, I think so, the only, the only one I think we didn't get a, a firm answer to was on the detention center and.
The jail, uh, the train.
Uh, we talked about the two, I think you wanted a Tahoe and, uh, and another vehicle on the jail, or you wanna discuss those?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, what it was, it was two vehicles that we were trying to get, so with the bad weather.
That we would be able to pick up our officers, but we got to have, we got to have officers at the jail. And that's basically what it was.
No, it, I may have misunderstood, I thought part of it was transport, is it?
It was for transport too, but they also would also use them to transport, but the main reason was for the weather.
Well, could I inquire, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, but you have to admit, there are other vehicle, four-wheel-drive vehicles within the sheriff's department that we could use, uh.
Yes, sir, there is.
You know, we, we do have availability of other vehicles to, to make sure, because I, I'm sure this past winter, you ran into some of those very issues.
We did.
So, uh, what we're, we're trying to do is find a way to, uh, uh, split the, split the apple, and, and it's difficult somewhat.
I think what they're wanting to know is, are the, are the vehicle, the existing vehicles in enough, in good enough condition, you think you could get another year out of?
We got two that's bad, but we probably could get by for another year.
A- a- and you could, you get a, another Tahoe or whatever, and, or to transport your officers on end, individual in clement weather.
Yes, sir, if we had to get by, we could get by.
I appreciate it.
And Jay. I hear, if we have to get by, we'll get by. I hear we had a bad winter, and we could have another one. I hear that the vehicles might get us there, might not. I hear that we gotta transport our officers, and the officers have clients in there, that you don't want that vehicle to put you down. I would expect if the jail asked that they needed, and at one point, it was a discussion as to whether or not to use a Tahoe or some lesser name vehicle. But if a Tahoe would do the job, and if it takes a new vehicle to do the job, and for the safety of the officers and their safe transport of the clients. I do not want us to be in a position of advocating from outside the table that we put it off a year when actually we need the vehicles. We can always put anything off a year, but the discussion at this table before you got here was. Were the vehicles needed or wanted? If they are needed, that's why you put them down here. And in all due respect to this conversation, if they're needed, they're needed. For safety, making sure they'll get there and get you back. And, uh, sound like it's a four-wheel drive, you need to be able to get through that ice and snow, and what we potentially have, cause they said, and then you, that, that the weather conditions gonna be different for a long time than it's been in the past. So I just do not want us to, uh. Not make sure that we're gonna get you there and get you back, that's all.
The problem we had last year when the weather got bad was, the officers was picking up people, trying to get them to the hospital at different places. Uh, we was out picking up people as fast as we could with our, a Tahoe that we had. And, uh, the jail van was doing the exact same thing. Some, some officers, we required to stay over, uh, we, 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 we booked them in the courthouse. So that we would know we would have help the next day. Uh, so that's, that's the problem we ran into last year.
Matt, speak. Yeah, Carol, you want to touch?
Yes, sir. Um, I know, Mr. Darling, you, you reps using other vehicles, four-wheel drives, it will help. We, we assure all those to patrol the vehicle during those times, so they could pick up their staffs and, and do their, their patrol duties also. Also, they have to get calls for the hospital, nursing, and get calls from everybody when, you know, you have a problem like this, and that's where most of our four-wheel drives go. We also try to assist the detention center, Major Greenfield also, but we all try to work together, but most of them, we all turn them loose, and they go over there. And with that being said, I know you said about Tahoe, but you're talking about something different.
Yeah.
Which you could save ten thousand dollars by buying two and then leave off the Tahoe.
Yeah, it don't have to be a Tahoe, I mean, this, that would be good to be a Tahoe.
They, they are in need of a couple of vehicles, they got some just, we were talking about it thirty minutes ago, we didn't know we were gonna be able to speak up here today, you didn't know we were. We were talking about it while ago, they got two down there, it's all the pieces, literally. I mean, really, I'm serious, I'm not, I'm telling you.
Okay, we, we need, that, oh, we're screen people. We need to take a ten-minute break.
We, we got a motion on the floor, let, let, can we get a vote on, on the motion, or the amendment first?
Just a second.
Well, if we come to a conclusion as to whether or not we need those vehicles, and if, if the sheriff department is the last one we're supposed to speak to, and if everybody's satisfied, I will withdraw my motion, but if we're not satisfied, then I'll keep it on, so, what do you say, Mr. Wood?
I, I will be glad to amend my motion to ask our county manager to discuss any ambiguities as such, and bring those recommendations, anything that's different, back to us on the seventeenth when we go to the motion, is that okay?
I think that way I could, uh.
That, that'll give you some, some.
That'll give me time to get back to the sheriff.
Okay, then I withdraw.
That's good, okay.
I'll withdraw mine.
So what? I think everybody sees what I, what we're trying to do here.
Are we saying that you're gonna vote on everything except that one be, except that one issue?
No, no, we're gonna vote on it all, and then you, if there's any issues that come up, well, as an example with IT, if IT finds that they can't spread it across two years, then you can't very well do it, and you're gonna have to report back.
Okay, all right.
So we're gonna leave that in your hands.
Only two issues that I think we've got a question on, am I missing something?
That's correct, it's IT and, and the judge.
All right.
And I'll talk to Feen after the meeting here and see if I can twist his arm.
Now, Bill, that's fine.
I don't know.
He does have a badge of the gun, doesn't he?
Okay, okay, we need to, we need to take a ten-minute break, because we've got to vote.
Okay.
I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Darling, motion's on the floor, any other discussion? No other discussion, all in favor, show of sign of right hand.